The hour being after 6:45, I'd like to call the March 2nd, 2023 School Committee Meeting to Order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, yes, I feel bad. Our next order of business will be a grand entrance.
A grand entrance. There she is.
Don't mean to completely embarrass her. Do you need a minute, Joy?
She's just coming.
Nope. She's pro.
Excellent.
Hi, Joy.
So we're going to completely embarrass her with a grand entrance. So we have Joy Martinez-Morelda to give us the high school report.
Joy, why don't you take that mic? It's not worth sharing next to me.
Coming back from therapy vacation, refreshing register, start school back up. There is a lot that has been going on at the high school. Speaking of vacation, those who went to Thailand and Spain have never returned and were very pleased with their travels, as they've recounted to fellow students. But funny and exciting things have gone abroad. While we get into the flow of things, one of the things our students are looking forward to in this speech is Spirit Week. Starting to pick up strong, Spirit Week has been a hit so far with days such as Pejometi, Ruffet Day, and Class Color Day, which has allowed the student body to look for something fun within the slow start back to the school routine. A new thing introduced to students this week is the Word of the Day, presented to the students during morning announcements, which will require students to email the athletic director with all the words of the week in order to win some cool Walpole apparel. Speaking of athletics, sports are in full swing with hockey and basketball tournament games this week. We are also seeing the start of the spring sports with a softball meeting coming up next Wednesday for those interested to play. Along with, oh, sorry. Clubs have also been off to a good start as we get back into the swing of things, with students being excited to see their peers who share similar interests. To wrap things up, as the year continues to roll out, more and more seniors are beginning to look forward to the end of the year activities plan for them, with prom being a huge one that many are excited for. Along with that, many are looking forward to the early release from school, which I know I certainly am, with the nearing of the end for many students as they hear up to take their AP tests, finish classes, graduate, and go up to the chaperones in their lives. It can be easy to get wrapped up in the big things, but many students constantly try to look for the small things that bring them enjoyment. And I encourage we all do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Joy? Yes, Carrie.
Joy, do you know what your plans are yet for next year?
Yes, college. I just got accepted to UConn today.
Congratulations.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Keep us posted on how it's going.
So now that you have rushed in here, you are free to rush out, because I know that you have many things to do as a senior. But thank you so much for your report. It's much appreciated. No, that's quite all. You made it work.
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Me too.
All right, so the next order of business is recognitions. Dr. Goff.
Yes, we're here to congratulate the students. They were awarded the Gold, Silver, and Honorable Mention Awards for this year's 2022-2023 Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing Award Program. With us tonight, and I believe we'll let Sandy Allison, the Walpole High School Department Chair, take it and introduce maybe her students, talk a little bit about the program that we've been participating in for many years now, correct? And then I also know that Ms. Weber, Ms. Heim are also here from Johnson and Berg Middle School.
So, yes, we have a few of our students here that could make it this evening as well. I'm Sandy Allison, and I'm the department chair at Walpole High School, and...
I'm Ryan Conlin. I'm our teacher, also our teacher at the high school.
I'm Melissa Heim. I'm our teacher at Johnson Middle School.
And I'm Madison Weber. Just changed the lang while last of yesterday, and I'm at Berg Middle School.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is show, we have a slideshow of all the winners. This is from the Scholastic Art Awards. It's been around, actually, this year is its 100th year. It's been around for a long time. We haven't been doing it that long this year, but we've been doing it a long time. And every year, we get great students who put in their artwork, and it's judged by professionals in the field. Very competitive, and there was over 8,000 pieces put in this year, and they gave away about 1,000 awards. So congratulations to all of you really who won. It's a very prestigious award to get. You know, famous people, as in Andy Warhol, have gotten this award before. And they go on to do great things. So I'm wishing you all great luck with that. I'd like to show this slideshow, and when your piece comes up, you can just give away if you have questions for the artist, or if you'd like to say anything about your work. If you're like, I don't know, it's okay, just let us know. Okay? Okay. So basically, to what I just told you, it is a remarkable achievement. So kudos, you guys. And it's really, you're going to see some great work here, and the students are able to express themselves through art visually and be able to say things and statements, explore, kind of hone their craft. And I just want to start here with, we have Berg Middle School. And Veronica Consoli got an honorable mention for this piece. Okay. She's now moved on to the high schools. This was from last year, but we entered it because it was still done at Berg Middle School. It was in a year.
Beautiful.
Yes. And this is Fay Tishka. She's in eighth grade now, and this is done with colored pencil. She was going to join us, but she had something come up at the last minute. And she won a gold key. Yes.
All right, Max D'Evil. Yep, this is eighth grade, eighth grade? Am I correct? Seventh grade. I know. All right, JMS Duran won silver key.
Can you say anything about it, Max?
Um, no, I'm good.
It speaks for itself, right?
Yeah. All right, Mae Leconner, also eighth grade, JMS, gold key. All right, and both of these artworks were done digitally, which is Korean.
Mae, where are you? Where are you?
A little shy of putting knowledge in your artwork. And then we have Sakina is also here. There she is. Sakina did this in ceramics and sculpture, got an honorable mention. And if that wasn't enough, Sakina also won gold in ceramics and sculpture as well again. I watched her create this piece, and it was fantastic. As soon as she started, you could tell. It's beautiful.
It was a process.
Process, okay.
It's all made out of nuts and bolts.
Wow.
Brooke Buckley, Buckley, in contemporary art practice, won an honorable mention for this beautiful piece. Anna Cameron, another student, silver key. Really nice meeting you. Rebecca Chen is here. Oh, sorry. For design one, this one right here.
Great.
Anything you'd like to say?
Um, this was, this was like my first time with Photoshop, because usually I have worked with a lot of digital softwares. And even the professional, for professional software for comic artists, this one was pretty hard. I didn't know how it got there. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, you did a really nice job.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Kristen Dentremont. She did this in contemporary as well, and it's gold key winner. Another beautiful, makes-me-hier piece. Ed Fitzgerald, ceramics and sculpture, silver key. I love these shoes. Sophia Casellas in contemporary art, gold key winner. And Sophie Murray is here. Did this in digital photography, honorable mention.
I took this in Boston.
This is beautiful.
Nice.
Sunset. Nice. And so those are all our students that won beautiful pieces of art. Any questions for us?
I mean, it's absolutely amazing. It's so nice to be able to share these and see these. I mean, it's, I'm glad they got awards for these, and we see them this way. I know we should probably sneak into the schools and see their work at other times, but this is absolutely amazing. Any other comments or questions?
You guys are all very talented.
Yeah, congratulations. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for recognizing them. Honestly, it's really, it's really nice to have accolades for the arts. So we really appreciate the chance to get recognized and seen up there. And we have some shows coming up, so you'll get to see some.
Oh, good, excellent.
That's what my question already gets to see.
We're going to start putting more on in the second floor gallery coming up this month for youth artwork. Yep, we're going to be doing that, too. So we'll let you know. We'll put them in the news.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Yep, Bill, I know you had something then, Carrie.
Send us all the time as others, which presented for us, maybe a link or something like that.
It's going out, and it's going to go out tomorrow. It'll go out my notes, too, tomorrow.
Great, excellent. Carrie.
One thing that strikes me is just the wide array of art forms that are represented here. And I think it's just incredible that our students have the opportunity to try out these different art forms, because maybe you never thought sculpture was something you'd be into, and all of a sudden, you have the opportunity, and it speaks to you, right? And it's a testament to our curriculum offerings and all of the hard work that you do in your department.
It is. It's a really good wide range of courses the kids can choose from, and it is a lot, and they really balance them out. They can do so much in this. So we're thankful we get to offer all those.
It's really unbelievable what you all have been able to produce. It's just stunning.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is recognitions of the speech and debate team.
Yeah, so we're here to also congratulate our speech and debate team students, and they earn the right to represent Walpole at upcoming national tournaments. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Murray and Coach Ruda, as well as their students, to talk a little bit about the tournament.
Awesome. All right, so I have students who definitely want to speak, given speech and debate. So I'm going to keep my remarks short, but as you just mentioned, Dr. Goff, we've had students qualify for Nationals, and this is the best year in terms of how many kids have qualified. We have two students who have qualified for NSDA Nationals, which is National Speech and Debate Association. And then we have four students qualified for NCFL, National Catholic Forensic League Nationals. So I first want to give a really warm welcome and introduction to our debate coach, who has been with me for eight years and leading the debate students for seven. She's incredible. She's had two students come through the Walpole system, and I couldn't be here without her. So this is Tammy Ruda. Tammy's going to speak a little bit, and then we'll each introduce the kids. Tammy, take it away.
Thank you very much. I'm delighted to be here tonight and have the opportunity to celebrate with all of you. I'd like to share just some general information about the team. This year, our team has had 32 different members of Walpole High School compete, 12 of them in debate, and 20 of them in speech. We have attended so far 14 different tournaments. We have three more on our docket. Our regular season runs from October through the first week of April. So we, so we have a very busy month ahead of us, that's for sure. And it will culminate with states, and we have a number of students who have qualified. Frankly, most of our team has qualified to compete at the state level. Your timing is impeccable. I'm sure that you knew this. Tomorrow is, in fact, National Speech and Debate Education Day. Okay, so, and I applaud you for recognizing that. It's definitely a story. So thank you.
We're good like that.
I wanted to, I know we're here tonight, and you just had an opportunity to honor, you're having an opportunity to honor our national qualifiers, but honestly, as a coach, winning is not my top priority, and my students know this. Our top priority is to learn and to grow from this activity. And so I want to just share some interesting statistics about the impact of this activity on high schoolers across America. The same things I'm going to share with you are happening here at Walpole High. So the first thing is that students who compete in debate have 0.66 higher GPAs on average. They have a 52-point higher SAT math score, a 57-point higher reading and writing SAT score. They also do better in terms of getting into their top 10 colleges, the top 25 colleges, or the top 50 colleges in America compared to the overall group, and that includes speeches in those statistics, whether you did speech or debate. And debate also has been shown to give you a 15% bump in self-esteem, which we know that high schoolers really could use. It's a tough time of life. And when you think about careers, I am a person who, I believe, has had career success that I can link back to my participation in debate in high school. But today, a LinkedIn survey of over 660 million people was asking, what are the most in-demand soft skills for employees? And what they said are five things that we are helping our students grow and build in our team with speech and debate. Creativity, persuasion, my favorite, collaboration, a close second, adaptability, and emotional intelligence. So I just want to tell you that we're so excited that we have this program here at Walpole High School. We hope it continues to grow, and we get more students involved and engaged. And I'm also proud to be a part of the MSDL. So I sit on the Board of the Massachusetts Speech and Debate League. So not only do I help our students compete, but I also am part of organizing this year 14 sanctioned tournaments that allow students throughout Massachusetts to engage in this activity. So thank you all very much, and I am going to introduce you now to my debate vice president and national qualifier, Sarah McCuzzi. Sarah's second year on the debate team. She is only a sophomore, and she has made it to Nationals. Sarah.
Thank you. It's a true love. Hi, everyone. So some of the reasons I love debate is actually how it's helped me grow as a person and how I can apply the skills I've learned to other areas of my life. I think one of the most obvious ones is public speaking. I'm not afraid to talk to a whole group of people. It just helps you be able to talk on the fly, not be afraid of presenting in general. Debate, more specifically, it's helped with my research skills. It helps with persuasion, figuring out in essays what's relevant, how to keep things concise, and again, just doing school presentations and other such. Now, the actual debate space is great, because I think it's an area where you can take your own personal experiences in life and apply it to topics, to different, to different arguments in ways that other people wouldn't have thought of. You learn more about current events, and you have to be open-minded, because you have to learn to debate both sides of every single topic. And again, you have to learn to listen to other people. You have to be able to give speeches without prepping them, without writing them in advance. Now, I think actually one of the biggest things I've gained from speech and debate is the friendships and the people I've met. Not only has it pushed me to be more social and meet more people, but I think some of my closest friends and closest friends in speech and debate are actually from other schools. Now, this NSDA National Debate, it's in Phoenix, Arizona this year. I'm one of the, one of the three from New England who get to go. It's a huge honor and opportunity to be able to represent Massachusetts, and I would love to be able to meet different people from all around the country and bring my own unique perspectives from a resident as Massachusetts to my arguments. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So again, Sarah is a sophomore, and she is one of three that qualified for NSDA Nationals, which is in June. Her, along with senior Steven Bond, who couldn't be here tonight. Steven placed 10th last year at NCFL Nationals. He's also competing at the same national tournament in June. He could not be here. I also want to recognize the other ladies who qualified, and then we're going to have two quick more remarks, because they really want to talk, and let's hear them. They sound amazing. Shaina Jane, if you want to just stand up. She is a sophomore. And then, Emily Cruz, if you could stand up. And then Buckthe Bell. They're all sophomores, so I don't know what's going to happen in the next two years. I mean, we're already making Nationals. This is amazing. And then sophomore Nerjara Akholy. Nerjara, come up, and then Buckthe. Nerjara is our cosecretary for the team, and she's going to talk about the speech perspective, and then Buckthe will do the same, and then we'll just wrap it up. Thank you so much. So take it away, Nerjara.
So last year, as a freshman, when you are new to high school, you're presented with such a multitude of activities to do. There's robotics, there's so many clubs, like there's French club, there's Latin club, there's athletics. But last year, as a freshman, I felt a certain gravitation towards joining the speech and debate team. Now, my current English teacher at the time, Mrs. Emily Murray, encouraged me to join, because she said that it was perfect for my extroverted and outgoing personality. Now, little did I know that when I joined the speech and debate team, I was part of a community, a community that extends beyond just the walls of Walpole High School and beyond the Massachusetts Speech and Debate League. It's a national community that we're united through our, like, love of public speaking. And whether it be like the Revere Fall Fest Tournament or the Harvard Invitational in Boston, it's an excellent opportunity for us to meet new people, and it's a great environment for you to be your true authentic self. Now, in speech, there's many events that you can do, from dramatic interpretation to informative speaking to program oral interpretation. So it's an excellent space for anyone, despite your interests, despite what you're looking to do in the future. There is a place for everyone. Now, I'm so happy that me, Buckthe, Shaina, and Emily are able to represent the Boston District at the NCFL Grand National Tournament this May, which will be in Louisville, Kentucky. So that should be fun. And I just want to say that at the end of the day, it's not the awards, or the medals, or the trophies that we're going to remember, but rather the memories that we make and the new people that we meet. So I'm just so excited that me and my fellow teammates are going to be able to go to Louisville and continue to extend this strong community and continue to meet new people. Thank you.
All right. I love this little pumpkin right here. Future speech team, debate.
That's what it's all about.
So our last speaker tonight is also sophomore Buckthe Bell. Buckthe is a member-at-large, so she's another board member, and she's going to come up and talk about her thoughts.
So Nerjara pretty much said everything. And I think just to add on about the benefits, I joined speech because I was pretty shy growing up, and I still am, but I feel like speech has really helped me gain more, like, confidence just in general. And I think that is probably the biggest benefit that you get. But there are also so many other benefits that I've realized. I mean, after joining speech, just the two years that I've been doing it, I'm starting to realize that it's given me a lot of other skills that I didn't think I would come up with, such as innovation, hard work, perseverance, patience, and so much more. And as I'm getting more real-life experience through volunteering and internships, I'm realizing that these qualities are actually pretty essential to success in life and how important speech is to that success. And it's made me realize that just a simple club really has a big impact on how you carry out your life. And not only that, but make a positive impact on society through these skills. And I think that's really what sets speech and debate apart from other extracurriculars, because speech and debate is so diverse that you really can attain anything through it, and that's why you can be so successful with the clubs. So I'm really excited to represent Boston at NCFLs and just spread my knowledge of speech and learn more from other people. Thank you.
Nice job, ladies. Thank you so much. And like Nerjara said, I'm taking these four ladies. Sarah's going to Arizona with her parents, but I'm going to be taking them Memorial Day weekend to Louisville, Kentucky. And I've already let them know I'm buying Kentucky Derby hats, so we're going to, there's probably going to be a picture you'll get, because you know I love my pictures. So thank you so much for the recognition, and yeah, that's it.
Great. Any comments or questions from the committee? Bill?
You may be surprised that a few of us up here also enjoy speaking. I think, as we heard both groups this evening, something really great, which, which strikes me is your ability to communicate very crisply, whether it be with an interesting piece of art, like we saw on the screen, or all three of you young students who spoke to us did so with strong arguments that were well thought out and very clear. And I think those are tremendous skills that, as you said, not just in speech and debate, but as you go into the world of work and later life, the ability to be clear and to be impassioned is a very great skill that you'll carry with you always. So we wish you luck as you go to these competitions later in the spring. And we hope to hear good results when you return.
Definitely. Thank you. Other comments, Nancy?
Yeah, I would just say it makes us really proud to see in person just like the fantastic passion that you have for things that are important to you. And that's, that's just a really, really good thing. And I think that coming to a meeting like this just shows the rest of the community that a good school system has programs like this, the art program and the speech and debate program, and others, too. But tonight's your night, so thanks very much for being here.
Chen?
Well, some of us up here like to speak more than others, Bill. I personally, I've never really enjoyed public speaking, and just seeing all of you at this age be able to stand up here and speak so eloquently in front of a group of people. I mean, I just was sitting up here thinking, these are like leaders, you know? It's amazing, an amazing skill that's going to take you far in life, and congratulations.
I agree, Nancy, that, you know, I'm just blown, I continue to be blown away from whether it be speech, debate, your artwork. It just makes us really proud to be doing what we do, what we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
So with that,
We want to roll right into new business, yes.
We don't need to do the second one, but school committee does need to approve the trip to Louisville, Kentucky from May 25th through May 29th, 2023, for the NCFL tournament.
Yes, and we will, I know some people are sneaking out. Students, please feel free to go home. We know you have a lot to do, and thank you so much for appearing before us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Yes, so as you can see, you know, this is going to be an amazing experience. Last year, I also took four students to this tournament, Memorial Day weekend, every Memorial Day weekend. And they were four seniors, yeah, no, two juniors and two seniors. So to be able to take four sophomore powerful women, you know, it just, I'm just, I got goosebumps just saying that I've got four amazing girls coming with me on the trip, and I'm really excited for, you know, like they said, the memories and the skills gained and the friendships made. So I'm really happy to make this possible for them. So I will be attending with one of the students' mothers who's going to be joining us at the chaperone.
Any questions? Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Nope.
Motion to approve the May 25th to May 29th field trip to Louisville, Kentucky. Second.
A motion by Bill, second by Mark. All those in favor, post abstained, 7-0-0. Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you so much for that work. It's a lot of work.
All right. Next order of business, foreign language update.
Yes, we have Lisa Osborne as our world language department chair for sixth and 12. She's present tonight to give a foreign language education update. Also present tonight is Kate Macon. She's here to present to give highlights for last week's trip to Spain. And then we also have a student, which I'll let Kate and Lisa introduce. And she's won a scholarship to Costa Rica in attending, as well. She's here to speak about the scholarship she received.
So Senora Macon is going to start with the fun stuff.
Buenos dias, como están? Bien?
Bien.
I'm pleased to introduce, this is Gabby Aluigi to the committee this evening. Gabby's a student in my Spanish Four Honors class, and she was recently awarded the AATSP, which is American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese, National Junior Scholarship to travel abroad to Costa Rica and stuff. So very proud of her. Gabby's high score on the national Spanish exam last year as a Spanish III student allowed her to apply for this scholarship. She wrote an essay in Spanish in which she described how being able to travel to Costa Rica would increase her interest in pursuing international relations after Walpole High School, as well as help her grow as a global citizen. During this week-long program, Gabby will be doing volunteer work. She's just finding this out right now. Santa Elena Cloud Forest Reserve.
At the Santa Elena Cloud Forest Reserve in Monte Verde, Colombia. So this experience will combine conservation, ecotourism, and education. She'll put her language skills to use when she stays with the local family for three nights. And this is a great honor for Gabby, and I know she will proudly represent our Walpole Public School community. We also thank the community's continued support for administering these national exams that we do every year in the World Language Department. They do provide opportunities, not just for our students, but also our faculty to travel to places in the Spanish-speaking world. So thank you and great job, Gabby. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And I'll just quickly, as Dr. Bob said, just fresh off our trip from Spain, the Walpole High School trip to central and southern Spain was a success. Along our journey, students learned about a 700-year period in Spanish history where Christians, Jews, and Muslims peacefully shared the same land. Students visited historic sites such as the walled city of Toledo, the Palace of La Lambra in Granada. It was also impressive to view the African coast while crossing into the UK territory of Gibraltar. Students were able to put their Spanish, put their communication skills learned in the classroom into practice during the free time we gave them, where they interacted with locals while eating, shopping, and completing a sort of scavenger hunt in Granada. We do hope the committee will continue to support these valuable travels, which teach tolerance, problem-solving, and group dynamics, as well as other skills. They are often some of the best memories that our students take from high school. So we appreciate the support and hope for continued support in the future. Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions, Mark?
I too was in Spain last week. I missed you. My favorite trip ever, Barcelona and just north of Barcelona.
Okay. Different spots.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Nancy?
I would just thank you for taking the time because not every teacher can do that. And we're lucky to have teachers that are willing to take the time to take the trips. So thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again to Gabby.
Absolutely.
It's amazing. Jen?
I was just going to say that having gone to Spain when I was in high school, I can say I remember and it was a fantastic memory. And I thank you for providing that opportunity for our students because it's just something, you know, at an early age, you have a love of travel and, you know, you learn how to adapt to different things. I mean, I remember I was there around Easter and there was a parade. It was like chaos. And it just was very eye-opening and, you know, it taught us a lot of lessons about you have to really think quickly because we just hadn't expected it. And, you know, it was a wonderful, wonderful trip. So thank you for giving students that opportunity.
Kids were great. It was a good time. Jet lag still, uh...
Thank you.
Well, this isn't intimidating. Follow me in speech and debate.
You cleared the room, Lisa.
Less pressure.
Yes, we're just going to have to dial down our expectations. But I thought for my presentation, I would talk about data because I've been watching some of the other department chairs who have called and discussing their data. And even though we are not a NCASS subject, I think it's important that everyone understands how we measure data in our language department and how we measure growth rates. So in world languages, there are two ways to measure data that we use. The first way is the traditional fill-in-the-blank, multiple-choice vocabulary fill-ins, verb conjugations. And that's what gives us data to know that our students are learning the foundational knowledge that they need to be able to acquire a language. And that data is important to us. There's a second way that we measure data, which is valuable also because the fill-in-the-blank doesn't measure everything that we want to measure. So the second way that we measure data is through open-ended prompts. Because if we use the premise that we assess what we value, what we value with our students is what they can do with the language. And we owe it to our students to give them an opportunity to show us what they can do with the language. So to talk a little bit about how we developed common assessments for our students and what we do with the data, just some things that I'll go over. When we decided years ago we needed to make common assessments and how are we going to develop them and use the data, there were two things that we did to get started. We studied the ACTFL Proficiency Benchmark. So the ACTFL guidelines are the national guidelines that are used throughout the country. And they're the best document which explains the proficiency levels, which is in blue in the benchmarks, and the description of what a student can do at that level. So those are the yellow descriptions as an indicator. Language teachers can pretty much give you these indicators off of that because we've studied it so much. But for simplification, I'll just say that the indicators describe the quality and quantity of language that students are using. So what we did as a department was we really studied these benchmarks and indicators, and we practiced grading student samples with writing and speaking. And we all became familiar and came on target with all of these different levels, novice, novice high, intermediate, et cetera. Our students in grades seven through 12 fall from the novice to the advanced low. Your AP student is your advanced low student and maybe advanced mid by the time that they take the AP exam. And the novice is your seventh grader who is moving into novice high as an eighth grader. And these benchmarks, we do have our targets, but they can move around depending on the student. So we became familiar with the targets. And then we decided as a department, based on time on learning with our classes, where do we want our targets to meet the level of our class? And so this took a couple of years to kind of decide, okay, what is our goal for proficiency in communication for these students by the time they leave this level of class? And so we developed these targets for our common assessments for when we go to collect our data. So that was step number one. And then we had to come up with a rubric to grade these common assessments. This is an example of a speaking rubric, and we have a similar example, which is a writing rubric. Every term, teachers at the high school give a speaking and a writing rubric to our students. And the four domains on the rubric measure, again, what we value. And students see this rubric throughout their progression in language. We give it a level two, three, four, five. Level one is a little different at first because it's mostly a checklist because there are such early learners. And then at the middle school, there's a rubric that is a little bit different, but it does start to break into the domains. And students are familiar with this rubric. So year after year, they're getting the same feedback from teachers. They're learning what they can do to move up the proficiency scale. And even though they're seeing the same rubric, they understand that as they progress through language, the rubric starts to demand higher expectations of them. We give these assessments, as I said, every term. We give a speaking and a writing. And then now we have our data. So what do we do with the data? Well, there are two major things that we do with the data. Number one, we use the data to inform our teaching. And number two, we use the data to give student feedback. As teachers to inform our teaching, the first thing that we do is we make sure that we're grading the same way. So we have the experience that's called devoitage or calibration or course co-scoring. In PLCs or professional days, we get together in our language-specific groups and we listen to samples and then we grade them. So our last early release day, we broke into Spanish and French, and we listened to various samples, and we graded it on the rubric. And our objective was to make sure that we were getting the same grades and calibrating and co-scoring and coming out with the same results. And we were happy to report in our department meeting on Tuesday that that was the case. We were either on the dot or off by three points. And if there were some outliers, we would have a discussion and then we would kind of bring everybody to a consensus as class rating. And so that's important for us because that ensures that teachers are grading students the same way, both languages, doesn't matter to a teacher. The second thing we did with this data is we decided, okay, where is this student on the proficiency scale? Intermediate, advanced, novice? And then we decided, does this meet the target goal for this level of class? And I'm going to save this slide to the end to decide to help explain what we do with that information, is a student on target, exceeding the target, below the target. And I want to save that for last. The third thing that we did was we talked about our students' strengths and areas of improvement. And so collectively, we come up with information as to where our kids are strong and where they need to improve. We call it glow and grow. And what we do with this grow information is we talk about best practices. We talk about activities that we can do in the class to really target improvement. And we use this as collective information to explain to our students so that we're able to give them feedback. And the fourth thing that we do is a little more complicated, but we take our data from the common assessments and we compare it with our data from the class assessment. So I said, there are two ways that we assess students. One is through these prompts to show, so kids can show us what they can do. And the other is the foundational knowledge, the memorizing, the vocabulary, the fill-in-the-blank. And we take those two data points and we compare them, we cross-reference because we want those data points to be as close as they can to each other. Sometimes I've said within five points. Overlooking at this data year after year, I would say our teachers are coming within five points. And that's showing us that if the data is matching, then the assignments that the teacher is giving during class is matching up with what the kid is able to show us, what the student is able to show us in an open prompt. If it's not matching up, then we can use that to self-reflect as a teacher. Was there an outlier assignment that maybe threw off some kids' grades? Was the common assessment too difficult? And again, it's an opportunity to reflect on our teaching and to reflect on how we're measuring our students. And then the last thing that we do with this data is we share it with our students. We use it to allow students to reflect. So they get their rubric back, they see their grade. There might be personal comments. Some teachers give verbal comments through the language lab. Collectively, we explain to the students our glow and grow. And then we say to students, what do you have to do to go from a three to a four? What's missing? What do you have to add to your repertoire? We might play a sample and we might say, this is what a 93 sounds like. So the student has an idea of maybe where they can improve. Sometimes we give them just a sample from a past student or just a blank sample, and we say to them, you grade the sample based on the rubric. So they really can understand how to improve and what they can do, what's missing, and how they can improve. So that's how we give student feedback. As far as Latin, we do this, we go through the same process as far as finding our targets and using our standards and using our indicators. With Latin, it's a little bit different because they don't speak or write, but we value reading comprehension. And so we use these indicators and these benchmarks to design reading experiences in the classroom. We want them to grow with their complexity of text. And then as a common assessment, we choose a sight-reading activity where students are sight-reading based on the complexity. And we're saying, based on their success on these reading assignments, how are they doing on our benchmark scale? Ultimately, with Latin, we want students to be able to read authentic texts by the authors. So reading comprehension is our most important skill. So that's, I want to end my segment. I want to continue to say, because every time, you know, I always have to give a shout-out to our teachers. These assessments took us a long time to design. They are harder to correct and they take longer to correct than just to fill in the blank because teachers have to give a lot of feedback. There's some subjectivity to it. And teachers really want to be conscientious about giving a grade that's meaningful and that matches their assessment. We give to a term, so it is time-consuming. And we dedicate time in our class for feedback. So there's time taken out of the class where maybe we wish we could move forward with content, but we really value being able to give kids feedback so they really understand how they can improve. And kids need to understand that we are a department that values communication and proficiency. And this is what you have to do to get these kids to be communicating and to be proficient. And then the last slide, this showed up on my Twitter last week, so I don't know if it made it to your packets, but it's a metaphor using popcorn. And I'll read it in case you don't have it. It says, "Popcorn is prepared in the same pot, in the same heat, in the same oil, and yet the kernels do not pop at the same time." So when I talk to you about when we see our kids that are on target, exceeding the target, not meeting the target, what do we do with that? We don't sort them and say, X percent didn't beat this and X percent... Our goal is to get kids stronger at language every day, every year that they're with us. We're looking for improvement. And so if the kid comes into our class and they leave stronger that day or they leave stronger that year based on our rubrics and what I've explained, we consider that a success. And we don't want our students to think, oh, I'm underperforming because... Because everybody is improving as they're moving up the scale. I end on popcorn.
Thank you. This is great. I think it was really informative to get the data. Like you said, we get the data from everybody else. I think this was really great. I appreciate that presentation. My son is taking Latin IV, so you guys are doing something right. So I'm really impressed that, you know, how he's been taught through the last four years have definitely been engaging in something that he appreciates.
Every time I come, I hear what level he's in.
Yes, he stayed. He's in IV, so that's where we're at. So, yep, he'll graduate with Latin IV.
That's wonderful.
Any comments or questions from the everybody else? Oh, sorry, Sean.
I'd just love to hear about the process that you guys take, you know, in assessing the students, but also in developing the assessments and the thoughtfulness and all the time put in to be able to assess the students, help them understand the rubric and know why they're getting what they're getting and how they can continue to improve in using the language.
I think when students feel like after X amount of years, they're still not fluent, they say, I just can't do this. But we really have to tell them, think of where you were in eighth grade. Think of where you were in ninth grade and look at what you can do now. I used to teach kids in levels three, four, and five, and I would save my level three recordings. And they'd all have a laugh as they went back and they had their level three recordings when they were in level five in case they felt so good about themselves. And I think there's always ways that we can show where they're improving. So for example, when we look at that glow and grow, the kids have been hearing, and this was kind of interesting, a glow was used in transition words, but a grow was used in transition words. So that really depended on the expectations getting higher as they moved up the ladder. I'll tell kids, I say to them, no one will do this, but a way that you can improve your fluency is to talk to yourself out loud. So when I go to the grocery store to work on my Spanish, I talk to myself out loud in Spanish. People have seen me. It's a little embarrassing. Break with the masks. But I'll just say, time yourself and talk out loud for two minutes and see if you can build your fluency. And once in a while, there's a kid who humors me and says, I talked out loud. You know, like, so that's something that we can get them to improve. And then so many activities that we do in class involve speaking. And we often hear, oh, kids don't want to speak now and we don't want to do presentations. So we don't necessarily do as many presentations as we used to do, but we do a lot of, turn your desk and you're going to talk about this. Turn your desk, here are your role-playing cards. Groups of four, here's the task that you have to complete in four minutes. And it just, over time, they just get used to that, being put on the spot and being asked to produce. And writing is the same way. I might come in and say, we're going to write for 10 minutes and let's see what we can do. And so there are some things that are, they know it's for a grade, and then there are some things that they know it's for practice. And it takes the whole department to all be on the same page.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say, I think a lot of our parents and caregivers, rightfully so, wonder what happens on these Wednesday afternoons. And a big part of our Wednesday afternoons is we commit to student intervention and student support. But I really liked Mrs. Osborne's presentation today because it shows you how much time and commitment is necessary to not only develop assessments that are this thoughtful, but to analyze and understand better how students can glow and grow. And I think that when we just think of traditional curriculum, we don't think about that complexity. And I thought your presentation really captures just how important that time is for educators, for our teachers to work in PLCs to support our students, to ensure their learning. So I thank you for that, and I thought that was really clear. And you can make the speech and debate team, Lisa.
Oh, they put me away. But it is an activity, you know, I sent it out, we're going to be doing zipotage or co-scoring, and then I'm always so pleasantly surprised, which is what happened at our department meeting on Tuesday. They felt good about it. The discussions are good, it feels like it's a good use of our time. We just share a lot of good information and then, you know, sometimes there'll be a level-two teacher who's hearing a level-four student that they had and they'll say, I can't believe she sounds so great, because we're all seeing broken, everybody. So it's a positive experience to do this kind of, this kind of work.
Sure. And Lisa, I'm really glad that you mentioned the competing interest between content and self-reflection and feedback because it is so important. And I think people forget about that and want to push through, and content is, you know, it's critical and it's important. We know that, we've talked about that. But just giving the opportunity for teachers and staff to have that critical self-reflection and then that's how we improve, and then also giving the feedback to the students. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Ralph. And as I've explained, we don't use textbooks and we don't have X amount of material that we have to cover. So we do need to spend time on reflection and building as we go rather than just plowing through coverage because what's most important is that kids understand the steps that we're taking to be able.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now craving popcorn.
All right. The next order of business is a vote to approve the BIKO amended collaborative agreement.
Yes, so attached you have a copy of the BI County Collaborative Agreement, known as BIKO. That was marked to show changes. This agreement was voted on and was approved by the BIKO Board of Directors. I sit on the BIKO Board of Directors. That was a school committee vote. Nancy, for example, is on the tech board of directors. The three, the three changes are, what needed to be added was that CCON Public Schools has now joined the membership. The second piece was that it was more for clarity, that each board member shall be entitled to one vote, and it was added on behalf of each appointing member of the district representative that was needed for clarity. And the third piece was the procedure for termination of the collaborative agreement, that we must abide by DESI Education Collaborative Closing Guidance. So what happens after this is that each school committee of each member district needs to vote on this. Once it's voted, then it goes to the executive assistants at BIKO. And then after that, we submit the proposal to the Bureau of Special Education to be approved by the commissioner. And you actually have a copy of the 2017, that's the last time that we made changes. We send it to the department and then they approve it. So I just, I need a vote to approve the amended BIKO collaborative agreement.
Motion to approve the amended BIKO collaborative agreement as presented by Senator Condon.
Second.
We've got a motion by Bill, second by Mark. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes seven zero zero. Thank you. Right into your report.
Right into me. Okay. So I hope you were all able to find some time to enjoy the February break. Of course, weather-wise, the last day of February, you know, had to make things interesting, didn't it? You know, I almost forgot those early wake-up calls to take my husband's truck to drive the main streets and back roads of Wapo. But fortunately, or perhaps unfortunately, depending, you know, how you think of it, you know, we had a two-hour delay and, sorry seniors, but we're still on, we're still on track here. March is packed with many school events, winter sports playoffs, school plays, concerts, dance shows, elementary conferences, and the start of spring sports. So I just encourage people to please refer to their principal e-noats and their district calendars for information. People, you know, see March, it's a long month, but it is jam-packed and it does go by rather quickly. Additionally, on March 9th, we will be chairing on our middle school unified basketball team as they play in the Special Olympics Basketball Invitational at Boston College. So that will be at 2:30 and it should wrap up around 5 o'clock. Also, want to give a plug for the Wapo High School STEM Academy for the class of 2027. There are current eighth graders. That Wapo High School is currently accepting applications for the STEM Academy class of 2027. All information, including the online application, is found by visiting the Wapo High School STEM Academy website. It's under academic tab on Wapo High School. Also, the middle school principals have sent out that information and they'll continue to send it out as well. The deadline is May 1st and students should contact their current technology teachers or they can contact Mr. Priscini up at the high school and his email is also posted as well. We have an online safety, digital wellness sessions that are offered for Wapo public school families. That is going out. Mary will have that out, I'll have that out as well. Wapo High School is partnered, as you know, with LineWise, but it's called Family Zone to provide our school community with online safety and digital wellness education. A psychologist and also, she's also LineWise's Director of Community Engagement will host a live webinar to walk families through our district's online safety hub. She's going to show families how to exactly use this resource and any of the digital pair, and then also being able to ask some questions. So the session also will include eight key online safety risks children face today, practical strategies to reduce the risks, and approach to setting up their home online safety. And the last segment is also going to allow parents to ask questions. There are links, those have been sent out. Again, Mary will send them, I'll have them on my site. And the dates are, really, they're separating it. So March 13th, which is a Monday, that's best for the element, that's going to be for elementary families, and that's at 7 o'clock. And then on Wednesday, March 15th, at 7 o'clock, will be for middle school families. And Tom is working on creating a third one for high school families, so that will be coming up. And there'll be a link to register for that. And if anybody has questions that has joined the webinar, that wants to ask questions ahead of time, they can email Tom Rafe. That's pretty good. Wapo High School, I'll pass this out, something that's new. A new addition to the superintendent's update highlights is going to be recent Wapo High School graduates. So in this case, that you can see, I've got a couple more, I need a couple more here. This highlight is Nora Mortali. She's a 2018 Wapo High School graduate, and she was recently featured in Clemson University's College of Engineering, Computing and Applied Sciences block. So her student profile is in there about her work and research, and you can read that, and biomedical engineering. So they'll have a link and it'll go right to the student profile. It highlights also some of her other accomplishments while at Clemson. So if you know of a recent Wapo High School graduate who should be recognized for shaping the future and making a difference, please let us know because, you know, while I think it's important that we definitely recognize our current Wapo High School students, I think it's also good to show our community, our recent graduates, and the wonderful work and the contributions that they're making to the community and the global society. So that's on it.
Great, thank you. Questions for Dr. Ralph?
And I do know that there's a business on there, there's no sheet on that. I can just do a quick update and then Mike, if you want to join in after, if you want to start.
Oh, sorry, budget update, yeah.
I can, if you want.
Sure, go for it.
All right, so just to give a basic update, based on where we are, it's a lot of status quo right now, but our current school committee budget's $53,506,500 and our town administrator's budget is $53,297,050. So we have a gap currently of about approximately $209,000. We're in the process, as we normally are at this time of the year, of looking for different ways of closing the gap. In perspective, it's not a huge gap, but it is something we have to address. We're very encouraged by the recent budget data coming out of the State House regarding Chapter 70 funding in particular, which is educational funding. These revised figures would be enough to close the gap between the town administrator and the school committee budget. Any additional revenue could be held in reserve to be used to offset increased special education needs that have materialized since our budget was set back in November and December. The school department is still moving ahead with strategies to reduce the overall budget needs, and these savings could also be utilized to insulate the school department and the town from unperceived overages in special education and other areas within the budget that may fluctuate as they normally do. Since the state-level budgets do not finalize until after the school department and the town budgets are set, the school committee and school administration will continue to work closely with the town administrator to accurately project future revenues and budget needs. Having said that, all indications are the newly-elected governor and the state legislators are working diligently to support school needs based on the unprecedented demand for resources. We are appreciative of all the advocacy happening behind the scenes as a result of our local legislators and others in state government. So good news, you know, as of late, and, you know, fingers crossed that things will go well.
And we had a good meeting, Mike and I presented to Finance Committee on the 28th of March. And so we were able to present, talk about our budget numbers, where we are, answer questions, and I think they're possibly waiting until the end of the month to vote on all the budgets because it is, you know, to Mike's point, see what's coming in, if there's anything else coming in.
Any questions or comments on the budget? All right. Next order of business is a middle school building project update.
So we're still on time and on budget, and I'll repeat that in this cycle with the MSBA, I don't know how many projects there were, 10 or 12 that went through the same window as us, but the only one on budget.
Good news.
So, that's it.
Thank you. Let's move on to the high school project updates. Any updates, Sean?
The architects are working on the design for the six preferences that we passed along. I think they're about 50% through. So that's good work that's being done. The town is working as part of that to fix the retaining wall out front of the school, which is exciting. So they're looking at getting that finalized so they can get a bid package out and have the work done over the summer between the start of next year and the end of this year. So that's good, I guess. Waiting on different options about how to address that.
And we have a meeting at the end of this month, March 27th, at 4 o'clock. So Chris from Tape will be putting together an agenda. And Sean will take a look at that and see if there's anything we need to add to.
Great, thank you. Next order of business, subcommittee activity. Any updates? Carrie.
Have we had a meeting since the legislative breakfast?
Yes. And it was the one I was not at. It was the same day, yes.
We have another meeting with the legislators tomorrow at Newton Town Hall.
Yes, yes. So we're going to Newton tomorrow to meet with legislation again. So we'll share updates at the next school committee meeting. You have no citizens to comment unless Celia has any comments?
Don't, don't open that flanking.
Okay. Future speech and debate team member, perhaps?
She's got the argumentative straight.
Okay, Sean, would you like to take warrants?
I would like to. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Those warrant numbers are 223032, 223033, and 223034.
Second. We got a motion by Sean, second by Carrie. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes seven zero zero.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrant for the amount listed in your packet, and that warrant number is 2331PA.
Second.
Motion by Sean, second by Carrie. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes seven zero zero. Thank you. Would you like to take donations?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to Boydin School, Fisher School, Old Post Road School, and Elm Street School from Dedham Savings, the holiday cards donation in the amount of $1,500. To Daniel Feeney Preschool from the John D. Langley Foundation, supporting music therapy in the amount of $1,380. And to Old Post Road School, Elm Street School, and Johnson Middle School from Bay State Textiles Recycling in the amount of $136.
Second.
We have a motion by Carrie, a second by Mark. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, passes seven zero zero. Somebody like to take the minutes?
Motion to approve the February 8th, 2020 policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, if we're, okay. If you're going to do them together or not.
Okay. And motion to approve the February 9th, 2023 school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Jen, second by Mark. All those in favor, opposed, abstained.
Favor one and abstain another?
Well, maybe we should have done them separately, sorry.
All right, so you want me to just go back? I'll do that. Motion to approve the February 8th, 2023 policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
All those opposed, abstained, passes seven zero zero. And the school committee?
Motion to approve the February 9th, 2023 school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Mark. All those in favor, opposed, abstained. Okay, 601. Thank you. And there is a need for executive, yeah.
The chairman, I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Act, Chapter 38, subsection 21A, purpose three, to discuss statute with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, the school committee, and you, the chair, so declare. And I also believe that we return solely to the purpose of the hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Carrie. We need to poll the committee. Carrie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jen?